Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Norris Elementary School. On the first Zapata County ISD. It's Tuesday, the nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. It's six oh five. And we have a group call. We have all members are present. We have a forum. And so move on to item number two. The invocation to religions and Texas flag.
Almighty God, ruler of the universe, by your power, we move and have our being. We are gathered here today to serve you and conduct the affairs of Zapata County Independent School District. Give us knowledge and strength to do your will with proper balance of eternal values and our present needs. May we accept all our responsibilities and act with courage, considering the feelings of other people. Grant us a sense of justice and stewardship both now and forever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Ms. Queen. So good. Item three with special recognition. We don't have any current data.
Not this evening, sir.
Okay, thank you, Monsalves. So move on to item four, public comments. It's for policy be local.
No, sir. There's no public comment.
And then the item five, board communications. Yes, welcome back, everybody. Okay, verification. And ready to start is another year. So glad to see everybody back and ready. Hopefully, I'll get the rest of the time. How I have.
Comments and.
Okay, move on to item six, super test report.
Thank you, Mr. President, board members and members of the audience. Any rest that they may have had has already been diminished with this week. We hit the ground running on Monday with kicking off our leadership summit for the week. And so we had a full day yesterday, a full day of legal today with our council and with finance and H R. And really just working on setting the tone for the upcoming school year, looking at our expectations and what the deliverables are going to be for this upcoming year. And really just doing some team building. So I'm very proud of the team and the work that they've been doing over the last couple of days. But this really is the beginning of what's to come. And really excited about kicking off a new school year with everybody and year two. So let's do this dance, and we're excited about it.
We move on to item number seven, action item. Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, Zapata County Independent School District Partnership Support Agreement with the Communities and Schools of Laredo.
Thank you, Mr. Monsalves and board members. Good evening. This item number seven is the renewal of the memorandum of understanding between communities and schools, or C I S, and Zapata County Independent School District for this upcoming school year. This program, for those of you that may not be familiar with it, has been around with the district for a very, very long time. We have a long commitment with C I S. Currently, we have one individual who is identified as the person from C I S that works in middle school. She's assigned to middle school this year. Their purpose is to facilitate the academic and personal success of students experiencing the effect of at-risk environments by providing the full range of C I S services to these, to those students. And middle school has had a lot of successes with this, with this particular program and individuals. So we're respectfully requesting this M O U to be approved and extended for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I do want to mention that there was an increase on memorandum from the eighteen thousand dollars that we have been previously paying for this M O U to increase to a twenty thousand, to twenty thousand dollars. The M O U is in your packet.
Do you have any questions on the M O U?
Do we know exactly how many students have been seen by this department of C I S?
Well, she, she's, she's only one individual, so she has those limitations, but she services as many students as, as, as they come out for, for support. If they have issues, principal recommends that they, that they get involved with career readiness activities, with all these types of activities. So the number varies from year to year, but she's, so she's pretty much is there to service all students in middle school to the extent that, that time would permit.
What would be the average more best? Would it be roughly sixty students, a couple hundred?
Uh, we're sort of middle school. What would you?
She does average, I mean, she sees over a hundred students throughout the year. And it just depends on the services that the students are needing. They do help out also with uniforms, anything that they need. They do give, you know, incentives for our students. So it's, you know, she has global communication. If it's something that our counselors cannot help with, she's there to help as well. So there's just a lot of communication between our counselors, us as administrators, and so she does provide. But I can tell you it is over a hundred students per year.
And for the uniforms, they, they help actually?
I mean, if there's, if our district, for whatever reason, at that point in time, you know, our district's very good about providing those uniforms as well. But like if a student comes in, doesn't have her particular shirt on, she has no idea where she, she can provide that. So we work very well hand in hand together.
I think that in regard to what Figueroa is saying, I would like to see an actual report.
We can get that for you, Mr. Three.
Because the objective is for them to stay in school.
An example, a great example, actually, of the impact of this program with our school district and this particular campus is that one of the individuals who was selected to represent her school in Washington was selected by C I S. And the program that they had was, was basically for that. That's one of the individuals that we're going to present, but she's actually at, in Washington right now as we speak, representing Zapata County ISD. So when she returns, I would love to, to provide that additional information to you, and it would be a perfect timing for that.
I'd like to add that I think, you know, I've worked with communities and schools for many years in both districts that I worked to prior to here. And, you know, we were actually trying to maybe have some conversation around extending that to the elementary schools because some of the need that, that is, you know, is evident at, at our elementary schools as well. But I think that, that we can bring back a presentation from our liaison at the middle school when we kick off the year, maybe further into the second weeks, and we'll have presentation, regular presentations from C I S.
It's not.
Does the eighteen thousand, or the twenty thousand, does that cover just the salary of the?
It's partial salary. C I S matches that.
Is there at least funds that go towards any kind of information or any kind of supplies? Or is it all just?
No, that goes a hundred percent to salary. Yes.
Gotcha.
So, you know, Ms. Gara had mentioned, you know, uniforms. She facilitates all the resources that the district already provides. You know, she's, she's an additional, you know, she's in liaison. So she, she would, she would advocate all the things that we're already advocating, such as attendance initiatives, raffling off stuff, and things like that, that she has access to with the resources from C I S. So not a direct impact on these twenty thousand dollars that goes back into resources. That's basically to get into the M O U.
And, Mr. Monsalves, why is it that we're focused on middle school and not high school?
Well, we only have an allocation for, for one. And at this point, we, as administration, we felt that not, this is not new to this year. We, she's, she's been in middle school for several years, and we saw that the impact that she had was much greater at the middle school rather than the, than, than the high school. Not that high school doesn't need resources, but they have different needs that their staff there can, can manage a little bit better.
We'll make sure we bring, invite Gloria Vandon, who's now the director, formerly an associate deputy superintendent at U I C, is now leading communities and schools, so we can invite her to do a presentation for the board for consideration.
Yeah, because it used to be that they would follow a class.
Yes, they used to have the cohort system.
Middle school, and they would follow that one class.
Yes.
But that's not the case.
No, that's not, that's not the case at this time. We, I do remember, maybe somebody might correct me, but I'm, I'm, I'm very comfortable in saying that we kind of did the opposite of gear up. So if gear ups at high school, we kind of swapped with, with middle school. We did that at one point. I don't know if that's the purpose, that she still stayed there, but.
The communities and school is in position to help every student. And they may target a select number of students because of urgency or because of needs, but they're really in a position to help everybody in that campus. And I'm sure that the campus helps with finances if, if they need extra resources.
Of course.
You have to do that sometimes.
I mean, they're part of the team, you know, they really are, or she particularly is.
They're really a part of the district.
Thank you.
So is this an action item? Do you have any more questions or not? I have a motion back. Thank you, Monsalves. Our favorite is item.
Thank you.
Move on to, I made a report, item, discipline report for the spring semester, twenty twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three school year total.
As Mr. Garcia makes his way up, board members, this is just a recurring item that will have, you know, that was brought to you this year and will continue in the year to come. It's bringing updates on our disciplinary reports. And we've been working very closely with administration and, and on the different campuses to tighten up our procedures and our systems so that we better reflect our data. And so what you're seeing is just kind of the, the data that we have this year. We'll be analyzing that data and adjusting our systems accordingly, which some of the work is already done. And, Mr. Garcia, we'll, we'll cover that. Mr. Garcia?
Good evening, Dr. Trevino, Mr. Gonzalez, members of the board. Just very quickly, I know you have a full report in front of you. I'm going to go over a few slides and just to give you the totals of office referrals at every campus for the spring semester. At Zapata High School, they had a total of ninety-three referrals. Middle School had a hundred and thirty-four, North Elementary four, South Elementary four. Fideran, Villarreal and Benavides had no referrals at all. Moving on to the next slide, this, the total for the school year. I presented the ones for the fall earlier in the year. Now I'm presenting the totals for the whole year. Zapata High School in the fall had hundred and fifty-four referrals. In the spring, they had ninety-three for a total of two forty, two hundred and forty-seven for the school year. Middle School had a total for the year, two thirty-five, so it was one oh one and one thirty-four. North Elementary had four in the spring, zero in the fall. South Elementary had four in the fall and four in the spring, total of eight. And Fideran Andrea Villarreal had zero for the spring, four in the fall. And El Benavides had none for the, for the school year.
So what criteria do we use to include the students as part of the one fifty-four and two forty-seven?
It's based on the student, it's based on the student code of conduct, this is what I mean?
Yeah.
So those are referrals, discipline referrals based on violations of the student code of conduct.
That end up in I S S, O S S, and the A P placement.
To the office or referral to discipline, then it gets logged, and then sort of log goes on.
On to the report.
Is there a reason that you see, I know, I know behavior's been a problem, but such a drastic increase from the elementaries, office referrals to, to middle school and high school, there, there's pretty big, is, is there that much behavior?
I mean, that's kind of a normal trajectory.
Yeah, it's always like that.
You don't normally have a lot of disciplinary incidents at the elementary, but as they start coming into middle school and they have a little bit more autonomy, a little bit more freedom, a lot of changes, changing classes, moving from hallway to class to class, hallway to hallway, you know, having a little bit more freedom, going, you know, into the restrooms and, and things like that. So, you know, that is kind of the, the natural trajectory of behavior, hopefully, with, well, hope is not a strategy, but with our new systems and our, you know, continued focus on discipline systems on our campus with P D I S and some of the things that we'll be talking about.
That's going to help out.
Hopefully, the goal is to see a decrease in that.
Right. So just very quickly, I'm going to move on to the total of in-school suspensions that we had for the year. I'll just go with the totals. In Zapata High School, we ended up with a hundred and twenty-one kids being placed in I S S for the year. Middle School, one ten. North Elementary had three. Zapata, South, five, and Villarreal had four in total. So for the whole year, as a district, we had two hundred and forty-three students that were placed in I S S.
So what curriculum do we use? What?
In, in I S S, really, it's the teacher of record that sends the work into, to the I S S room. The teacher of record is responsible for sending that work for that, so that the kid can continue working on their.
Somebody carries that?
There, there is a person. We do have a I S S instructional assistant assigned to that room that monitors that kids are working on their schoolwork, on their classwork. Out of school suspension, the total, we had two hundred and twenty-six for, as a district, one seventeen at high school, one oh five at middle school, one at north, and we had three at south. And the A P placements, we had hundred and forty-one for the year, eighty from the high school and sixty-one from the middle school, none from the elementaries. And just quickly, I just wanted to mention some of the things that we want to initiate for the, this school year, coming school year. We're in the process of developing a student discipline administrator's handbook. There is not going to be published. It's going to be like a guide for administrators to use when they're coding and finding solutions to some of these discipline issues that we were having as a district. So some of the things I'm going to include in that administrator's handbook is a student code of conduct, the chapter thirty-seven, which everything has to do with discipline. In-school suspension procedures, we're going to change those up a little bit to make it a little bit more structured. The P E M's a center discipline codes because we've had some coding issues or, or errors. Discipline protocols and procedures, meaning things you need to check on before you actually assess or give a, the consequences. And looking at their labels, put it that way, they're five oh four, special ed, you know, homeless, all that good stuff. And of course, the D A P, the D A P placement intake and exit procedures, including maybe an early release program. Where, for example, if they're placed there for e-cigarette for forty days, maybe we can release them in twenty. They meet certain criteria.
Will you be sharing this particular handbook with us?
Yes, we can, we can share it with the board, of course. Once we completed that, we'll, we'll share it with you. And the second thing I want to work on, or we want to work on, is having discipline safety meetings with a designated person from each campus every third week of the six weeks. So we can check on coding, so we can check on safety issues, discipline issues, and how we can, you know, make it better for our district.
Does this include the P D department, the security officers as well?
Yes, we're, we're going to include our, our chief of police, and if we need to include the, the ones for the campus, we can. Because we, we got to see what they're seeing out there, you know, with exterior doors or maybe the parking lot, you know, kids going out, whatever else.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So see how we can improve on that. And that's the end of. Any other questions?
I have a question. Where, where you have discipline protocol and procedures, so that would, would it fall into whether, if they're going to get like suspended, not suspended, and if they're going to go out? And then there's like the follow-up of, if the student is, has to follow, I don't know, that.
The inter?
If they look and, and those kinds of things.
All those kinds of things.
Then there's timelines and anything that needs to be, I guess, followed.
Right.
All right.
Well, you mentioned safety meetings. Again, do you elaborate a little bit more on that?
On safety meetings, Mr. Trevino, we're talking about, remember that we're going through audits of our exterior doors. We have to do weekly sweeps of the exterior doors. You know, if we're having issues with, at the, at north with door number three, and it's been constant, and, and we've been trying to, we're going to have to find a solution on how we can get that fixed. It's got to be, you know, working properly a hundred percent of the time. So how can we make it better? Or, or kids are walking into school, can we leave maybe the magnet open a little bit longer? You know, stuff like that, that have to deal with safety, that we need to have maybe the security guard or the police officer out there.
And the, and the door, in, in the case of the doors, is that third party that comes in and helps out if it's a technical?
If it's the access point, there's, there's things that are, maintenance workers can do, but there's times that the magnet, that system, there's an issue. We try and take care of that through technology with Connie Gray and Tommy Garcia. And if that's not possible, we bring Jenga, the, the company that installs those system to address the concerns.
Does it happen often?
It doesn't happen very often, but it does happen. And they come right away. So we got to make sure that we get the report so we can take care of it right away.
So how does safety meetings tie into the handbook?
Well, if, if you want.
Well, let me answer that real quick. So, so the idea behind our safety meetings is going to be all encompassing. It's not only focusing on discipline. It's going to be focusing on fire drills, on active shooter drills, on tabletop exercises in the event of evacuation. Also reviewing, you know, specific disciplinary concerns that are happening, like baking, things like that. And it, and it acts as, as a cohort of representatives from each campus to be able to gather together to discuss, to get information, to be able to turn around training to the campuses. So if I'm the safety representative for my campus, I get, I come to this meeting, I get information and training. I then in turn turn around to my campus and deliver that training to everybody so that everybody's on the same page. So it's just another layer of communication around the safety initiatives in the district, not just discipline, but all things related to school safety.
Going back to discipline, you said there's discipline meetings. There's also discipline meetings. meetings with the parents, would it involve?
The administrator that assesses the, the punishment or gives, let's say, they're, they're supposed to be meeting with a parent.
How often?
Whenever the incident happens.
Whenever incident.
Whenever there's an incident.
The other thing I wanna add as part of the new initiatives coming is that we're doing some work as a team, some problem and practice around how we enhance our attendance, our attendance processes and how we're working with our families, but also around discipline. So you'll start to hear some conversation about bootcamps and mandatory, like council meetings where we have a group of, of representatives from the campus and the district level meeting with the parent and student because of excessive absences, and so that we can try to curtail that. And so we'll be rolling that out, it's still a work in progress, and, and it's some of the things that, in our strategic plan, are part of the year-one initiatives that we're gonna be working on, and so we'll be bringing those updates as we're rolling that out and keeping the board informed with that. But you will hear, hear talk of that, and parents will start to maybe have conversations around that and questions about, well, I'm being called to go into a hearing about attendance and why, but it's because we're trying to tighten up our processes so that we can make sure that kids are in school and that, that, you know, they're, they're safe as well.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Mr. Garcia.
On, we'll go back to action item number nine, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, student code of conduct, is it, is it the same report, right? Or no?
No, no, it's not. This one is an action item, so. Good afternoon again, Mr. Gonzalez, Dr. Trevino, the board. Just very quickly, I'm gonna go over the change of the student code of conduct. May, there's very few, and the ones I'm gonna go over, it's, it's due to the legislative bills of the eighty-eighth legislative, legislative session. So I'm gonna go over those bills very quickly because those are the ones that triggered the changes in our student code of conduct. These are the three that had an effect in our student code of conduct, House Bill one-one-four, House Bill thirty-nine-twenty-eight, and House Bill fourteen-twenty-seven. So going into four, House Bill one-fourteen, the bullets, it amends the chapter thirty-seven to make clear that a conference hearing and review provisions of thirty-seven point zero zero nine apply to all the removals for mandatory placements in the AEP and expulsions, and we already have that in place. Our administrators are very good about hosting those meetings, bringing in the parent, and if necessary, a teacher, there's a teacher removal, the teachers involved as well. This bill also requires a student to be placed in the AEP if the student possesses, uses, or is under the influence of, or sells, gives, or delivers marijuana, THC, or an e-cigarette, okay, to another person within three hundred feet of school property or at a school-related event. So neither caught with an e-cigarette, it was a nicotine, or just, it was discretionary, now everything's mandatory. E-cigarettes includes everything, where it's THC or nicotine. So now it's a mandatory placement of the AEP. It removes the requirement for mandatory expulsion for felony marijuana, THC and alcohol-related conduct, and the bill also allows a program of, of educational support services to be provided to a student parent for an offense involving e-cigarettes. In this part, we're already doing our LCDC counselors go to the DAP, and they provide counseling and sessions on vaping and the effects of vaping, not only with the student, but also, they also invite the parents for that. And all these changes, if you look at your student code of conduct, I think you have a copy, you can find them on page sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, and those changes have been updated, or have been made to the student code of conduct based on this bill. Moving on to the next one, well, there's another part to one-one-four, where it states that if the DAP is up to capacity, and there's a, a student that, that commits an offense, well, with marijuana, THC, cigarettes, and, and alcohol, and all those things, they shall be placed in ISS, and in school suspension, okay? If the DAP is up to capacity only, okay? It goes on to state, do we have it there? Yes. If a DAP is at capacity when a student engaged in a violent crime needs to be placed, a district may remove a student placed in the AEP for conduct related to marijuana, THC, e-cigarettes. You can move one of those kids into ISS to make room for the violent crime, the student that committed a crime that was violent, okay? And then if a place comes back, it becomes available with DAP, that kid that you moved twice is you bring him back to the DAP, that's all it's, it's, that's all it's doing. And like I said, all these changes, you can see them under page sixteen, seventeen, and there is a section that we added that says the, the AEP at capacity, it's there on page eighteen of your, the student code of conduct. Moving on to thirty-nine-twenty-eight, this House Bill requires the district to provide information to a student's parent or person standing in parental relation to the student about, about the process for requesting a full individual and initial evaluation of a student for purposes of special education, both when the student is placed in the AEP under section thirty-seven point zero zero six, and as part of the student's personalized transition plan developed by the campus administrator. So in other words, when we have that meeting, at the conclusion of the meeting, to place the kid when, when the administrator's working on the paperwork to send to the AEP, we're gonna have to provide information on how their child can be tested for special education. And it's also required when they do the transition from the AEP back to the high school. And that, that change, you can see it on page eighteen, under placement order section. Moving on to the last one, fourteen-twenty-seven, it expands the offensive harassment under penal code forty-two point zero seven to include making obscene, intimidating, or threatening telephone calls or other electronic communications from a temporary or disposable phone number provided by an internet application or other technological means. And really, in the handbook or the, the code of conduct, where it affects, it's gonna be on the glossary part, on page thirty-one and thirty-two, has a definition of harassment, and it's gonna add D, E, F, and I, okay, there, there's different definitions under, or parts to harassment. So they added D, E, F, and I. Those are the major changes to the student code of conduct, pretty much the rest stayed the same as last year. Do we have any questions, or do I have any questions?
Does the police department get this training?
Yes.
As far as the House Bill?
He's sitting through all the trains with administrators, our chief. He, he passes on the information to this.
Work together. So is that legal already?
Yeah, yes, it's good. So at this time, administration requests approval of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four student code of conduct that's presented.
And second by Mr. Gonzalez, on favor is your hand.
Thank you.
And to Mr. Garcia.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Who wants to add, and, before the minutes for regular school board meeting held on May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, and June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three?
Good evening, Mr. Gonzalez, Dr. Trevino, members of the board. Administration recommends the Board of Trustees approve the minutes for the regular school board meeting held on May twenty-third and June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes. Your motion, taken by Mr. Yovara, on the favor is ready. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you.
Who wants to add, eleven, report on financial thing?
The Child Nutrition Fund reflects total realized revenues as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three of three million, fifty-seven thousand, twenty-seven dollars, and expenditures of two million, three hundred and twenty-six dollars, two million, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars, for excess deficiency of revenues over expenditures of seven hundred and thirty thousand, nine, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars, and transfer in a fund balance of one million dollars, for a net change in fund balance of one million, seven hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars. Year-to-date encumbrances for the Child Nutrition Fund reflects seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars, that is over excess of regular revenues of seven hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars. As of today, we would add to the fund balance two million, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. Any questions? The General Operating Fund, as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, reflects total realized revenues of thirty-three million, eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, seventy-eight dollars, for ninety-five percent actual to budget versus expenditures of twenty-four million, eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars, for excess deficiency of revenues over expenditures of nine million, forty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. Expenditures by function, that is a comparison of year-to-date from last year to this year at the same period, we spent forty-nine thousand dollars less last year. Does anybody have any questions?
Less this year?
Last year, as you can see in function eighty-one, the majority of, of the facilities and acquisition that we were using for our, our fieldhouse construction was the majority, and JOTC building was the majority of the revenue of the expenditure at that time. That was a fifty-five percent decrease. Time elapsed for the General Operating Fund, I'd like to point that year-to-date encumbrances reflect two million, eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars, that has not been realized but is expected to be realized of the excess of revenues over expenditures of nine million, forty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars of revenues. We have collected ninety-six percent of, of actual, budgeted to actual. If we were to close the budget now, we would add, we would add to fund balance nine million, forty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars. Any questions?
So how much time do we have to spend?
How much time do we have to spend? We have the whole month of July and the whole month of August.
Is it gonna be spent?
Uh, yes. Well, about five hundred thousand that we'll have left over.
What about the revenues?
Excuse?
I know our state revenues are, are.
Are done for the year. We're done collecting.
We're, we're below budget by one point eight million, one point.
Um, if you look at this slide, the very first revenues, year-to-date actual is thirty-three point eight million, percent to budget is ninety-six percent, variance is one point four that we're under. That is.
Including the excess that we have over.
Correct. That's attributed to our reduction in state revenue.
But as far as state funding?
State funding, we're no longer collecting, we're gonna continue collecting on federal and on local. Local for taxes, federal for our indirect costs.
So how much you protect?
Um, on our local side, really, at this point, we're collecting penalties and interest in prior year taxes, maybe another two hundred thousand. In federal revenue, we're still, remember, summer school was paid out in the month of July, we receive a restricted indirect cost of twelve percent. I have a summer school report, we have spent about one million dollars, so we'll be receiving another twelve percent of that one million going back into General Operating Fund. So we're, we'll be.
Nine million, nine million, forty-two, seven, ninety-three that, that we're gonna be spending, is that dedicated towards?
So the year-to-date encumbrance is what has been encumbered, that's a promise to pay, that's typically our utilities, our overhead costs, any type of, of purchases or services that we have procured out, but we have not yet realized those expenditures, and the nine million is really payable that's left over, because we have the whole month of July and we have the whole month of August. But the way that I would ask the board to gauge where we're at, if you look at the non-spendable portion of the fund balance, which is seven point four million dollars, that is what the state requires for the district to retain on hand in case of a shutdown, it's three months of operations. So what this is saying is that the district operates on two point four million dollars in expenditures per month. So if you, we have two more months left, we're, we're probably looking at another five million dollars in, in operations that will be reduced from the nine million, plus what we've encumbered of the two point eight million, which will put us at about one point three million excess, but we still have summer school to pay out and our bond payments, so. Any more questions on the operating? And so our debt service fund, we have realized revenues of one million, seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars, and realized expenses of eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars, for a net change in fund balance of one million, six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars. And so what does that look like? That looks like if we were to shut down right now, we would add one million, six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-three to fund balance. However, our year-to-date encumbrance for our principal and interest on our fifteen point eight million dollar bond is one point nine million. All that we are expected to receive is our local revenue from our tax collection, so hopefully, we're hitting, we're hoping to hit at least ninety percent. Bills, claims, and accounts for June twenty-twenty-three, for this year, in the month of June, the district paid out in bills one million, five hundred and twenty thousand, two dollars and fifty-seven cents. As compared to last year, we spent two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars more for the month. And this, members of the board, is inclusive of all of our funds, not only our general operating and our child nutrition, but our federal funds, that consists of everything that's two, two-eleven, all the way down to six-nine-nine. Any questions?
On, on the local revenue, that includes, you're accruing that, the interest paid on, on your investment to that every month, or is it quarterly?
Uh, no, every month.
Every month?
Yes. Our investment pools, uh.
You'll get another two hundred, two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand just out of that in the next couple of months.
Correct. I know that we are probably looking at an increase to our investment pools, so I think that the district will end on our, our local revenue side better than budgeted due to our investments. Support documentation for bills, claims, and accounts is included in the board agenda. And so our tax collection summary for May twenty-twenty-three that we collected in the month of June, it shows our MNO revenue at ninety-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-four cents, our INS revenue for our debt, thirteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents, for total collections of one hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and two cents, less our delinquent tax attorney fee, which leaves the district with a disbursement of a hundred and six thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. And so what does that look like as compared to budget? So the top part shows the fiscal year, we budgeted ten million, four hundred and fifty-six thousand, five fifty-two, we've collected, collected ninety-seven percent of what we budgeted. As compared to last year, we were at ninety-nine percent. Now, how does that compare to our opening levy? Because the district runs a budget from September to August, we start our tax levy in the month of October. Our tax levy is eleven million for the twenty-twenty-three tax year, we're at eighty-seven percent collections up to this point in time. Previous year, at the same time, we were up eighty-eight percent. Does anybody have any questions? And so the last. And so the last report that I would like to present to the board is our summer school program. Last month, Miss Anna Mariela presented our instructional part of our summer school program. So I thought it only necessary to report on the finance portion of our summer school program. And so as the board can see, I included our programs, what we paid for our teachers, our regular summer school program that consisted at all of the campuses, a number of personnel that we hired, sixty-six teachers, instructional assistants for the regular program, eight. The teachers for the bilingual program, we had six with six IAs in that program. Our special ed program for extended school year, we had seven teachers and an additional four teachers for our special summer programs. And then twelve instructional assistants. Our migrant program, we had three. Our library program, we had four. And our guidance and counseling program, five. For a total instructional staff of a hundred and twenty-one staff members for a twenty-two, twenty-three expense of five hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars. For our support services, we had forty-eight personnel working for our summer school support service, and that included our child nutrition program, our security and police department, and our nurses, and our bus drivers. We paid out a hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars for a total expense of six hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars for our summer school program this year. Some of the highlights this year that I'd like to point out is we maintained a ten-to-one student-teacher ratios. So we made sure that those class sizes were small. Our teacher summer school pay rate was fifty-five dollars per hour, and I'd like to say, mention to the board that we had almost all of our staff members have perfect attendance, I think with the exception of four of our teachers. And then at the bottom, you can see a little table of our student attendance. For North Elementary, the number of students invited was three hundred and eighty-seven students invited, sixty-five percent attended. For Villarreal, we had two hundred and six, two hundred and seventy-six invited, sixty-nine percent attended. Our middle school, we invited two hundred and sixty-six students. We surpassed that by five percent. And then high school, we invited close to three hundred, and we had about forty-five percent in attendance. So of our one thousand, two hundred students that we invited, we had an attendance of eight hundred and fifty students for seventy percent of the students that we invited. Excuse me?
Doctor Trevino, is that wrong?
No, that's, that's, that's a good number. That's a very good number.
I mean, I don't know, don't know if we have the information on the daily attendance of all the students because they were required in order to get credit. This is just, we, this is just who attended summer school from the ones that were invited.
Invited, correct.
The attendance rate might be a little bit different, but, you know, we invited all these kids and and this is what showed up on the regular.
Does the district have to make a report in some of it?
No, but this, this report is necessary for our S R funding. We have compliance for our federal programs that we are required to report to them. But Dr. Trevino is right. We invited twelve hundred more. You know, we would never turn anybody away, of course. But of the eight hundred and fifty-six students that actually attended, I, we can get those attendance rates, but those rates were pretty high. I mean, we had good attendance from our students.
What did you do different during the summer and the school year?
I would have to ask the-
Parents don't want the kids at home.
I would have to ask the, you know, the-
One of the things, we joke about it, but I think there was some, maybe some wisdom to it. The middle school came to us with a proposal asking if they could delay the start of summer school one more week. And so everybody else started the week after, you know, graduation happened. And as for, you know, regulars, so June first, and the middle school, they stayed home one extra week. So they almost, the kids had a two-week vacation. And I think at that point, they were ready to come back and do something. They had already gotten, you know, bored enough at home that, that they were ready to come back. So, you know, we're always looking for innovative ways to get our students engaged, and the middle school demonstrated that, at least, you know, in terms of the number of kids that showed up on the regular. So we'll be looking at that, but we're very pleased with the way summer school. And I have to say that, that was something that the campuses designed, on, you know, the campus administrators, along with C and I, and H R, well, and the whole team actually worked together to really come up with a solution for how we could better improve the quality of our summer school program. And I think that that was evident in the rollout.
It was evident. I had access to some of those, you know, folders, those call logs, the teachers. They did a really good job. I think consistency with the teachers, the instructional assistants. Expectations were, you know, carried out, meetings were held, and the teachers, you know, and the staff in general did a really good job getting the students to come in.
And I think it helped, you know, through the board's support that we offered the permanent rate. So we increased the rate to have consistency in the classroom. And so teachers were committed to that, and I think we had, you know, really good turnout. We're in years before, there was rotation, you know, I'll come today, you come tomorrow, you come the next day, I'll come the next day. Or you're one week on and I'm one week on. And so we had more consistency, and I think that that'll, you know, we'll see the payoff of that, you know, as we transition.
So the innovation techniques that were used were different for summer school that motivated the students wanna come to summer school?
Not having to, well, one, it was a different setup in, at the elementary, and I'm sure at the middle school as well. But at the elementary, we had a rotation where they had counseling and they went to P E. They went, they had like a little rotation, something a little bit different than what they do in the regular school year. But we included a lot of the social emotional learning through the counseling. And I think that that was based on some of the feedback that we got. That was a highlight that, you know, they really appreciated. The counselors appreciated having that time with the students. And they had, you know, the students appreciated having that time also with the counselors. So it's something we're gonna continue to look at as we look forward.
Was Elvin, I mean, this included in this report?
Yes. They, they were, I don't know how many students were-
They were, they were, we must admit.
And we, we did have a teacher too.
Yeah.
They were just combined with the other, with the other campuses. They were, they were together with the other campuses.
So if y'all recall, we combined, so we had the upper grades at Villarreal Elementary, right?
Yes.
The three through five was hosted at Villarreal Elementary, and pre-k, the second grade was hosted at North. And so all the teachers were hired from all the different campuses, went to whatever grade level they were teaching. So you had a combination of staff members that each of the campuses and all campuses were represented.
If I may add, the support from the coordinators and the planning, we had two planning days. So they utilized those two planning days to plan the four weeks. And then they had, they had an hour every Wednesday to just keep up with their planning. So I think that that was also, that attributes to the success as well.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Park. Would you want to add, involve, snack panel, approve a general operating budget amendment, B A twenty-two, twenty-three, oh six?
Staff recommends amending the twenty-two, twenty-three general operating fund in the amount of one hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred as a result of transfer between functions and authorizing the superintendent to implement said budget. This transaction has no effect on fund balance. So these next two months, I will be coming to the board. We're trying to close up the year. Fiscal year ends August thirty-first, so we need to, we wanna make sure that all of our budget is in line and in compliance with state law. And so as you can see, really, the bulk of this amendment is to cover our general supplies for our students for the new year. And so I'm moving money around to make sure that we allocate to be ready for the beginning of the year.
A second.
Would you like to dial this for me a second, that it's in there? Um, favor, would you again? Back to the amendment, thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to add, thirteen, approve of quarterly investment report?
The district had total investments with an ending market of forty million, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents, and interest earned of three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents for the quarter ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. So this report of board members, I added one more column for you. At the very end, you can see the prior year period endings. That was as compared to the same period as last year. Last year, we had an earnings for the quarter of forty-eight thousand. This year, the district has earnings of three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. And so the district, and I would like to mention, we had ending investments last year of forty-five million dollars. So with having five million dollars less in liquidity, we still earned more in our investment. So the board, our local investments are doing good, and we're hoping that will continue this way up until December twenty twenty-three. So I'm requesting board approval on the approve of the quarterly investment report for the second quarter ending twenty twenty-three.
We have motion to approve that.
Second. A second.
Let's second, but I'm charmed. Yes. On the favor, Rachel, I hold. Four two passes in, I see. Thank you.
Thank you.
One faction, item number fourteen, to show it to section five five one point zero seven one, five five one point zero seven four, for technical support. The board will discuss relegation, retirement, legal absence, unemployment, personal opposition, return legal absence, and contracting over teachers and administrators. Board is now in executive session. It is six fifty-nine. Thank you.
Yeah, it's the order.
What did?
Order.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, we're back from executive session. No action was taken. Uh, it is eight thirty six and we're back in open session. Order item fifteen. Uh, action regarding twenty two twenty three formative evaluation of superintendent school.
The recommendation is to approve the audit evaluation as presented in those sessions.
Okay, so we have recommendation to approve the audit evaluation of the superintendent as presented in those sessions. I'm also approve. We have motion to approve it from Mr. Montales. Do you have second?
I say.
All in favor, which way hand? Motion passes unanimously. And me, action regarding modification of superintendent's formal contract.
I'd like to make a motion that we extend the superintendent uh for one additional year at this point.
That will be through twenty twenty six.
Fair motion by Mr. Fodis to extend the contract to twenty twenty six. Do you have a second, Mr. Montales? All in favor, which way hand? Motion passes.
All, all vote.
All of both? Do you do again?
Uh.
Okay.
So, motion passes.
Yes, I'd like to just state for the record that the reason I'm opposing this proposal is due to the board's inability to properly evaluate Dr. Trevino, being as she has just completed the first year of her contract with these ZCISD. As elected officials, we represent the best interest of the taxpayers of Zapata County. I cannot justify a modification of the superintendent's contract based on one year performance with no statistical data of improvement in students' test scores or TEA school ratings or a disciplinary decline in our schools because it has just been one year. I firmly believe that we have not allowed a reasonable amount of time to pass in order to reevaluate the performance of our superintendent in order to justify the approval of this proposal. This proposal should not be a priority of ours at this time and has zero benefit to the taxpayers of Zapata County without the proof of improvement in schools over time. I might add, from the perspective of the public, the modification of the superintendent's contract does not reflect well on the school board's priorities when also considering our hires and promotions as a district. Thank you.
And just for the record, it's due June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
For the record, it's till June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Do you have any other comment here?
Well, I'd like to say that uh Dr. Trevino is not a rookie. Uh, she's been a superintendent for many years. We all have experience in evaluating individuals and we have evaluated her and we've come to the conclusion that she is doing an outstanding job to the district. There is no board that I know of that is taking care of the budget, that's taking care of its monies, that's taking care of its personnel more than this board has in the history. And, you know, we have differences and we disagree, but I believe that it is warranted at this point to give an extension to our superintendent. And that's why I made that motion and I stand by my motion.
Okay. So, we have a, we already did motion in the past. We move on to item C. Approve the following positions. Zapata Elementary Principal. We have a recommendation for.
I'd like to recommend for approval, Mina Lopez de Jesus as the principal for Zapata North Elementary.
Okay, need a, need a motion to approve the recommendation. Do you have a motion by Mr. Montales? Do you have a second? Do you have a second, Mr. Trevino? All in favor, which way hand? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Uh, for the position as Zapata Middle School Assistant Principal, I'd like to recommend Cynthia Medina.
I have a recommendation by superintendent for Cynthia Medina for middle school.
A mega motion that we approve the recommendation.
I say.
We have a recommendation by Mr. Fodis, second by Sendevo. All in favor, which way hand? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations to Ms. Lopez and Ms. Medina on the new opportunities. Looking forward to having them on, on their new leadership roles. And then we have um district communications. Mr. Montales?
Mr. Montales, I'd like to ask the board for uh the special call board meeting on Monday at noon. Just to, a friendly reminder that that's our, our intention. Is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
What day? At noon.
At noon, please.
On Monday, the twenty fourth.
The twenty fourth, at noon?
This will be a special call board meeting.
This is a, for budget. Quite, pretty much a budget work.
To set, to set the, approve the date for the budget and approval of certain issues without us.
It will be, it will be a meeting, though it's not a.
Yes.
It's coming Monday, right?
Yes.
At Thursday.
Oh, so you're not going to be taking care of salaries at this point?
More than likely, yes. We're going to do probably a report item and request approval.
It's not, it's not a workshop. It's a, it's meeting.
It's a special.
But so they are going to recommend arrangements for the.
Compensations.
So, to let everybody know.
Compensation plan. Yes, Mr. Montales?
Because we have six hundred thousand dollars to want.
So for, for Monday, we have special call meeting on Monday, the twenty fourth, at noon. And there'll be recommendation for um salary adjustments.
Correct, for the twenty three, twenty four school year.
For the twenty three, twenty four school year.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Montales.
Thank you, sir.
Then uh, make your motion to adjourn the sixteen forty two.
Thank you.
She is adjourned here.
Uh, Mr. Montales?
Thirty.
Thirty.
No, I have a back giving.
Ah, was it thirty? Oh, yeah. I think I'm like, that's a, I don't know. Yes.